Could we all sit down now, please? We're about to get started. Hi, my name is Susan Koke. I'm going to be your moderator for tonight's Mayor Council County Board and the Love Initiative Debate that's going to go. So it's going to be candidates first telling you a personal story. Can anybody hear?
No.
Okay, so first it's going to be candidates telling a personal story about themselves, just for you to get a chance to know some of the people that you might not know personally. Then we're going to have questions for the candidates. And then we're going, after that's through, we're going to have Jason Isles from, and it was right here, thank you, Jason, and Mario Fonda Benardi are going to be giving the pro and con side for the Love Initiative. And then there'll be a chance for audience questions. We hope you'll have lots of questions for us. And then everybody will get to make a closing statement. So that's how we go. And I'd like to thank TJ Monimer and Jennifer, show yourself, from the center, who are our hosts this evening, which we greatly appreciate. We love our debates in Santa Monica. And I'm going to introduce Ted Winterer, Teri O'Day, Armin Malconian, John Mann, Terrence Slater, Oscar De La Torre, and Mendy Smith, who are the candidates that were able to join us tonight, for which we're very grateful. There are several, two candidates who are in Toronto on a business, or government meeting, and that's Glyn Davis and Tony Vasquez. So they couldn't be with us tonight. And there's also a candidate named James Watson who wasn't able to be with us tonight. So that's the whole story. And we're really looking forward, so let's get started. We are going to do something a little different tonight for our first thing. You know, a lot of, we live in a small town and a lot of us know each other, and know each other personally as well as knowing how we do politically. But a lot of us don't. So I've asked each one of the candidates to give us a 60-second little story about themselves, just so that you feel like, oh, no, I know something about who he is as a person, as well as who he or she is as a candidate. And so we will just start with Ted.
Is this on?
60 seconds?
Yeah.
Push the button and on it goes.
Okay, just making sure.
Speak into the mic.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ted Winterer, and I thought I'd just tell you a little bit about my family. I live in Ocean Park with my wife of now nineteen years. I missed our nineteenth wedding anniversary because I was at a candidate forum. I promised her I'll make it up to her next year, our twentieth. We'll do something very special. We live with our two kids. My daughter Eleanor is a freshman in Santa Monica High School. She's a good kid. She's played some soccer, played some tennis. She's on the cross-country team right now, a good student. Suffers a little bit from teenage anxiety, social anxieties. My son Steele's a bit different. He's a fourth grader at Smash, super smart, likes to surf, likes to ski, but I did the team sports, told me about two years ago, you know, Dad, over dinner. I don't think I'm ever going to play any sports. And I said, "That's fine, son. I'm still proud of you. Don't worry about it." And then I went into the bathroom and cried for ten minutes. And then we have two rescue dogs, two purebred mutts that we got from the pound in South Central. And then, of course, is my wife Beth, who is the glue, holds us all together and keeps things together.
And Teri O'Day.
Good evening, I'm Teri O'Day. I thought I'd tell you, many of you know I start up environmental businesses in my career, most recently with electric cars. But also, my first job in my career was in the EV industry. And so I'm very much back to my future. And it's not just my job, it's actually a real part of my life, because I met my wife, who was marketing the EV1 for General Motors in 1996. And we met on a video shoot that was being done for my company, Edison International, to introduce it to the broader Edison Company. And she portrayed the salesperson selling the EV1 to a customer, and I was the contractor installing the charger in the person's garage. They had just moved, the customer, it turns out, was her boyfriend, whom she had just moved here with. I exchanged phone numbers with them and never heard from them. And months later ran into her at Harvells. And the EV1 was our getaway car at our wedding date.
Armin Malconian.
I'd like to tell you about a cat named Freeway who lives with me. About four years ago, I was driving on the freeway coming back from Orange County, took a friend of mine to get some kitchen cabinets. And as we're driving back, he pointed in the, we were on an interchange between two freeways along the five, and he pointed at the median and he said, "Look at, there's a cat." And I looked, and there was a little kitten shaking and shivering. I don't know, something happened inside of me, but immediately I decided to stop. Came to a stop and looked behind me, of course, in the mirror. It was about midday, and I got out of the car, ran up to the cat, and they stopped traffic, and the cat went under one of the stopped cars. Got up on the wheel well. I reached in, tried to get her, grabbed her from the cuff of her leg. And as I walked into my car to get her off the freeway, she bit me. I thought she was a dog for a second, because I have a little small dog. So I was holding her like a puppy, and she bit me right on the web of my hand between my thumbs and my index finger. So now I'm thinking, if I let her go, she's going to die. And I got to get her into the car. Get her into the car, I get her home, and now she's my cat.
John Mann.
Well, I have to stand up to show you my best. Some of you have seen it when you were young.
Mike, John, put on your mic.
How do I do that?
Just push the button in the center. There you go.
Oh, I didn't hear that part. I'll start over.
No, just keep going.
All right, anyway, my first political demonstration was in 1963. I was a seventeen-year-old Navy musician based outside of Washington, D.C., when Martin Luther King gave his "I Have a Dream" speech. My most recent button is from the Democratic National Convention, when they had the WikiLeaks. So some of you might want to reconsider about voting for Hillary. She's going to be the next president, anyway. Now, I've been in a lot of demonstrations over the years, even one in Homburg celebrating the 50th anniversary of their--
John, ten seconds left.
I started doing this when I was middle-aged. Now, and I was an idealist, but now I'm an old man in my seventies, and I'm getting cynical every time I run, because I see what's going on in this city.
Okay, thank you. Terrence Slater.
Hi, folks.
Got your mic on?
Terrence Slater. I am a lifelong resident of Santa Monica. Grew up hard work in a middle-class family. Got a sister and I've got a brother and three sisters. My uncle had a music company, and I ended up on the road with Jimi Hendrix when I was eleven. Cut to a buddy of mine needed some ping-pong tables to take down to South Central to put in front of a daycare center. And I, he had a car, I found ping-pong tables, we got him down there. Met a guy named Geronimo Pratt.
See this?
Yes. And Geronimo Pratt, later on, was a fellow that I helped Johnny Cochran get out of prison. He was arrested for the murder of two people on Lincoln and Wilshire, and spent twenty-seven years wrongfully accused. So that's--
Thank you, Terrence.
I've always been there for the little guy.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Oscar De La Torre. I'm a lifelong resident of Santa Monica, like Terrence. I was a young man out of college, wanting to make a difference. We ended up organizing the largest demonstration against violence in the city's history. It was called the Visual for Peace. More than a thousand people marched through the Pico neighborhood, calling for an end to the violence. And we followed it up with a forum on youth violence and social justice. And then we went to City Hall, asking for support. And so we ended up creating the Pico Youth and Family Center, that I've been leading for the past thirteen years. And I'm very proud of the work, and I'm also very proud of the work and the impact that we've had in reducing gang violence and reducing youth violence in the city of Santa Monica.
Thank you.
Mendy Smith. Hi, everyone. My name is Mendy Smith, and I am running for Santa Monica City Council. I have three kids that I raised on my own, Zoe, Maitland, and Max. And believe it or not, I have two of them that are over the age of twenty. And my youngest is actually living with his dad in Seattle. His father is dying, and so his last year that he is, you know, with his dad instead of being with me. So that's really sad, and I miss him like crazy, and I've been kind of reduced to being a Skype mom with Max. It's great that he's actually getting time to spend with, time with his dad at this particular time. And smoking sucks, and I don't think anybody should ever smoke. And my son is hoping to, like, take that charge on full, so that nobody ever has to go through what he's going through, losing his dad this year.
Very sorry to hear that, Mendy. Okay, now we're going to talk about some of the things that Santa Monicans are talking about and thinking about for this election. So the first question goes to Oscar, and I'm going to ask you about the Santa Monica Airport. It's a controversial issue in the city. What do you see as the best future for the use of airport lands? How will we get to that future? Talk about the process you would like to see for land use decisions, and discuss the legal concerns. I don't get ninety seconds. I'm really sorry about short-time answers, but we have to get through the evening. So help me out, guys.
Okay, so first of all, I don't want to make any false promises. I don't, I don't want to say that, you know, we can do this. You know, I know a lot of people want a park, a park at the airport to replace the airport. Obviously, these are legal issues that are going to be tied up in the court. The FAA, I mean, is going to fight in this case. So we don't know exactly all the details of what the outcome might be. One thing I can say is that the jets at the airport are not a good fit for the community. I mean, I walked in my child one time, you know, we, in a playground, there's a playground right next to where the jets are at. A jet fired up the engines and just soaked us with a bunch of, you know, just exhaust. And it was horrible to think that, right next to where children are playing, you have these millionaires, you know, lighting up their jets so that they can fly to San Francisco or New York, wherever they have to go to do business. You know, most of us take Southwest Airlines, you know? But in any case, I think that the jets need to go. I think that, but on the other side, I feel that when we talk about the airport, it's more complex, you know? I'd like to see more green space. I think what the city's doing in terms of trying to create more green space is a good thing. I don't know all the details in terms of the businesses that exist. I mean, I'd like to learn more about the small businesses or the local businesses that exist at the airport, because it's not just an airport, there's also a lot of businesses. So I want to protect those businesses and figure out a way to, if there's a way to make a compromise happen where we, where the community gets rid of the jets, ends up with more green space, and also protects the small businesses that create a thriving economy in our city, that's what I'd like to see happen.
Thank you very much. Could you answer the same question, please?
Well, much like Oscar, I've lived at that airport all my life, and I see that there's so--
I hear my mic on. There you go.
So many, you know, grew up with a family of five, I figure, you know, they can hear me in the back of the room, anyway. Anyway, the, as far as having the number of people that, hard-working people that have jobs there, the fact that it's been there, you know, since everybody bought homes around it, the number of things that are a great concern is we have an eight-square-mile restricted airspace that will disappear once the, once the airport is gone. All the communities surrounding that airport area have also had to keep their building low, and that is natural to go up. There's many, many impacts of this airport, besides it being a superfund site, and that, you know, that is, a number of my senior friends here in Santa Monica came down with respiratory illness just from the dust that was created when the train was being worked on, the train track and all that. So there's a number of things. I'm for keeping the airport, I'm for, you know, standing up for how Santa Monica is. Thank you.
Teri O'Day, please.
Same question.
Yes, please.
I'm compelled by the vision to turn our airport into a park. And the city has been moving to take control of the airport. In particular, we have multi-pronged strategy underway. We have multiple cases in litigation to claim the control, establish the control that we deserve to have over our airport land. We've been advocating for our position with the FAA, and we have been, in the meantime, reducing the impacts of the airport by controlling the number of flight schools and different types of operations, by attempting to limit the pollution that comes from the airport, both noise and environmental pollution. We've also been working towards planning a new future for the airport. So as I, in my imagination, as to what that airport land can be, I imagine something that serves more people than it does today, that reaches more folks with greater community benefits. Today, I think it serves a smaller population than what the land could serve if we provided a great park for our city.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to take another question now. Everybody's, not everybody's going to answer everybody's question, but at the, at a certain point, if there's a question they really wanted to answer they didn't get to, they're going to get a chance to come back to it. So we're going to go on to our next question, which is traffic. Traffic is everybody's complaint in this city. It can take longer to drive through downtown Santa Monica than to walk through it. What actions that the city has already taken, would you say were successful in addressing or easing traffic congestion? And what ideas do you have for further reducing traffic congestion? And we're going to start with John.
Well, traffic has already reached, it's beyond critical mass, and there's no real way to fix it. What we can do is stop it from getting worse. And the way to do that is to put a moratorium on all development. I'm sure we're going to be talking about that some more. When I first moved to Santa Monica in the seventies, it's really quiet here. You know, we probably had one-third or one-fourth of the budget that we have now. It was more diverse. It was easy to get around, it was safe to ride your bicycle without being worried of hitting a car. Even though we have the bike paths, it's not safe. So one of the things that I would like to do is see downtown closed to traffic. That's just one thing. I'd also like to see the big blue bus free for everybody. That would encourage more people to ride the bus, of course. There are other things we can do to alleviate it a little bit, but it's just impossible. And I blame the current city council for letting it get to this point, because we knew this was going to happen. I knew it was going to happen. I've been talking about traffic at most of the last, say, five or six elections. So nobody's been listening, and now it's too late to do anything, except stop it from getting worse.
Thank you. Ted?
So I think it's useful to look at the different components of our traffic congestion. About thirty percent of our traffic comes from people starting at points outside the city and going to parts also outside the city. It's cut-through traffic. And we have very little control over that, obviously. That's part, to address that traffic, that's more part of the regional planning for better options for mass transit, more ways to get people out of their cars. Then we have the issue, we have more jobs than we have housing in this city. So many people come to the city every day to work. We are addressing that through a number of strategies, one of which is that we, for years, had requirements for employers to reduce the number of car trips they've generated. We recently lowered the threshold in terms of the size of the workplace that's captured by that program, and increased the threshold for the number of trips you have to reduce. We're able to do that now because of the arrival of the Expo line, the connection of the big blue bus to the Expo line, and other forms of transit that enable people to get to work without using their cars. And then we also have the visitor component, and that will always be a challenge for us. One thing I think we need to do is look at some of the large events we have in the city, whether the things like Glow or the Pier concerts. And we don't need to sell ourselves so much, we bring in those large crowds in summer weekends, we can reduce some of that impact. And then honestly, the rest of it is us, and we have to all look at ways that we can get around the city without using cars. And to that end, the city's put a lot of emphasis and infrastructure investment in the Breeze Bike Chair, new bike paths, better mass transit, easier access to walk to school, all those sort of programs that help us get off our cars, and we can contribute to reducing traffic.
Thank you, Ted. Armin?
If I understood the question correctly, is what has, what has the city done to reduce traffic? Absolutely nothing, is the answer. The city policies have actually increased traffic. I'm a civil and environmental engineer, and what I have found is that there's a policy push from the state level down for a densification, urbanization across cities across California, with a push on an emphasis to create housing. And the idea is that housing close to jobs will reduce traffic. The reality is, in Southern California, we are married to our cars, and people don't live and work at the same location. The projects that we've seen, for example, the Fred Segal Site, was a transit-oriented development site located adjacent to a metro station. And the environmental impact report for that housing project shows that there will be 4,411 additional daily car trips as a result of that project, focused right in the center of an already traffic jam area. So the answer is we're doing nothing. We're providing bike lanes, we're reducing the capacity of our streets to force people out of their cars. We are trying to social engineer the residents of Santa Monica. We are, we're failing. We're not reducing traffic. Right now, there's four million square feet of development in the pipeline, of which three million of it is actually commercial development and not housing. It's time for it to stop, and Measure V will solve that problem in our city, it'll stop traffic from getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Armin Mendy.
Well, I agree that the city has done next to nothing. Part of our campaign, we go out and actually knock doors and talk to people about this, talk to residents and talk to voters every day. And people who have said, "Well, yeah, we knew that back in 1987 that this was going nowhere. We knew back in 1994 this was going nowhere." And you can pretty much take every four years and every single new city council that has done nothing. Day Trips, businesses that make up Silicon Beach, all of those things, we don't have control over as council members. But what we do have control over is what we actually can do in our jobs every single day. And the Expo line is like a Disneyland ride, folks. I don't know if you've been on it, but it's not a people mover. It is not set up to move people effectively. I don't know who was there the day that they actually designed the thing, but I was quite shocked when I rode on it the first time and saw the ups and the downs, and is it going to be above the ground, is it going to be below the ground, is it going to be beside the ground? Those aren't decisions that are made, apparently, with actual people and actual solutions in mind. And so I hope that going forward in Santa Monica, when we elect people to represent us and our interests as residents and voters and commuters, that we actually think about who's doing the planning in the city and whether or not it's effective.
Thank you. We're going to move on to another question right now. Santa Monica is known for its outdoor lifestyle. I forgot to turn my mic on, sorry. Santa Monica is due for, is known for its outdoor active lifestyle. We walk, we jog, we cycle, we swim, we surf, we play volleyball, soccer, you name it. So there's a couple parts to this question. First of all, how do you rate our existing parks and programs? Do you think we have enough parks and parkland to meet the demand in this city? Do we have enough soccer fields to meet the demand? And if not, what ideas would you have for creating more parkland and more playing field in the city? And finally, I'm going to give you a little bit longer to answer this question, because it's got so many parts. And finally, how would you look at funding these parklands, programs, playing fields? And we are going to start with Oscar.
Well, I'm very proud that whenever my advocacy or activism turns into public benefit, and the new park that, the newest park in the city of Santa Monica that we're about to open in 2017 is called Ishihara Park, named after a World War II veteran that lived in the Pico neighborhood of Japanese descent. So we're very excited that that project is moving forward. But it wouldn't have happened without the advocacy of young people involved with the Pico Youth and Family Center, with the leadership of the Pico Neighborhood Association that we work very closely with. The Expo Authority came in to put, you know, the maintenance yard in the Pico neighborhood. I mean, it's a dumping ground, you know, for all the bad developments, so the freeway, the city dump, you know? And then now this maintenance yard. So we fought it. You know, the community organized, we educated residents about the problem, the noise pollution and so forth that was going to come, that was going to emanate from the maintenance yard. We succeeded in getting, you know, what they call a buffer zone. Now it's called a park, so we're happy that, you know, it's called appropriately. But that's the type of advocacy that I would continue to provide. I think that we, we do need more park space, more green space for the young people of our community. I think there's an opportunity at the Civic Center. I've been outspoken about that. You know, Santa Monica High School has a lot of students. Being on the school board, you know, I understand that, you know, we need to support our young people, and we have 3,000-plus students at Santa Monica High that need more play fields. And I think we should support that at the Civic Center. In terms of how we pay for it, I mean, you know, there's one thing that we are, we're fortunate in this community. You know, we have, there is, there's a lot of wealth. You know, there's different ways to tax ourselves if people are willing to do that, you know, for, to pay for it. There's a couple of measures on the ballot now, GS and GSH. I mean, we have shown that we're capable, as a community, to do some pretty amazing things. I mean, that we're supporting public education and housing. That's great. That we support more park and green space, I think that's also a very worthy investment on our part. So those are the types of things that I'll support.
Thank you very much. Ted, how about you?
So we absolutely need more park space in Santa Monica. In the county of Los Angeles, the average number of acres of park space per thousand residents is 3.3. While here in Santa Monica, we're about 1.2, 1.3 acres of park space per thousand residents. Now granted, that doesn't count the beach. We do have a big sandy park out there with a swimming pool next to it. But we need to add more park space in the city. The way we're going about it, we've added about eight acres in the last couple of years, including Tompa Park and Ishihara Park that Oscar mentioned, and we are just fast-tracking 12 acres of land at the airport that the FAA is not contesting our use of, to expand the airport park, and adding playing fields there for our youth, and also some, you know, passive recreation area, and some community gardens. We are committed to taking that Fisher Lumber Site that the city bought a number of years ago and expanding Memorial Park. We hope to do that in conjunction with the money that might come from Measure V, the college bond measure. We just last night took another look at the Civic Center. We're already committed to putting contemporary playing fields in there, but we're now in discussions with the school district about jointly financing underground parking there to cut, take, to replace the parking that will be lost by the field, and making that a permanent field with underground parking. So we're moving forward to all those. And of course, the big cojones is the airport. Outside of those 12 acres, we're already converting park. We have another 200 acres, which we believe, when we regain control of the airport, we can convert to a park. And with the rental income that currently comes from the office spaces around on the airport later, which currently is used to subsidize airport operations, once we don't have to pay for the airport operations, we can take that revenue stream and use it to fund the capital improvements and the operational costs of that park. And then finally, we're taking a look at Stewart Park, which we'll now call it Kandora Park. We're going to be putting in a new water facility in that area. When we do that and pick that up, we can get rid of the landfill that's underneath that park that causes excitement and make a better, flatter playing service for kids there.
Thank you. John, turn your mic on.
Okay.
Anybody who's not speaking, please turn your mic off, because it messes things up.
Obviously, the biggest area that we need to turn into a park is the airport. And this is something, I was the first candidate to talk about several, quite a few elections ago, and I was mocked for it. But now, everybody's in favor of turning, attaching the airport to Clover Park. It's kind of funny, because I went to Clover Park High School in Washington State, and I got in trouble because I still have a C, so I hope nobody does that here. But if they do, so what? But the idea of parks, you know, at one time, there was so much more room in Santa Monica to build parks, but we're just building over it. One thing we could try to do is to create more space, say, over the freeway, and cover that up and put parks there. I don't like the idea that the city spent over $100 million to put a park in front of City Hall, which benefits the employees, so they can go out there and have lunch. $100 million for a park. You could do a lot better, you know, by spreading it out. One of the things that I don't like to see happening to our parks is how they're being used and how they're being maintained. They're not really being taken care of. If you walk around the park, you see bare spots in the grass. You can blame it on the homeless, but that's our fault, because we're not really providing any space for a lot of people who are homeless. They can't go into the, any place that, unless they're completely sober. And unless you have-- you have, you know, a place for them, they're going to just destroy the parks. They're going to bring in ants and all kinds of problems. So maybe we should just turn one park into a tent city for the homeless. You know, we need to have someplace where people who have these psychological problems and mental problems and drug problems, where they can live. I mean, if I want to get drunk or high, I can do it in my own house. And think of about all the people that are functional within...
Can I have your little close-up please, next?
All right.
Mendez?
Well, we don't need temporary solutions. We need permanent ones. And parklands and open spaces...
Can you pull your mic a little closer, please?
Parklands and open spaces, soccer fields and track, public parks and recreation programs and after-school programs are the ones that always seem to get cut. That for whatever reason, people aren't utilizing the spaces. And so we don't need them and we can't afford to fund them or clean them. And they do become areas where people just start living, literally because they have nowhere else to go. And, you know, if we stopped giving more pay increases to the police and to the firemen and to city employees, we'd probably be able to find a few dollars here and there to do something effective for the city and our open spaces. The Heal the Bay study that just came back just a couple of weeks ago said that out of all of California's beaches, the top 10 most disgusting beaches, Santa Monica came in at number five. And I don't know how many of you guys go down there to the free events and see all the people that are coming in and just leaving their trash laying around. But there aren't any more garbage cans to hold the trash and most of them, they're just piles. I mean, it's like something out of an old Dr. Seuss movie in the 70s. And basically, if people can, they will. And so I think that if we have, you know, more garbage cans, let people know that we don't want filth here. We actually want open spaces here. It'll be safer for kids to go outside. One of the things we're doing in our campaign is advocating for a green hour, where you go out every single day with your kids for at least an hour without your phone. You're not looking for Pokemon. You're actually going to go and find some space outside where you can spend time outdoors with your kids. And the more people that do that, the more space we're going to find for that. And, you know, like, why didn't they have LV? Like, 20 years ago, guys? Seriously, 20 years ago. So those are solutions.
Thank you very much. Ted?
Oh, sorry. The parks question?
He was the first one. I thought that's what you were asking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to say you, Terry.
You want me to do the parks too?
Yes.
Well, I joked with Ted just a moment ago that I was afraid that I'd follow him on this question because I thought he did such a wonderful job. And he had a couple of things to it, as you've heard from some of the others as well. How do we fund our parks because we have a vision to increase our park space? One of the important ways is to vote for Measure A, which is on the county ballot on November 8. That's a countywide measure to fund parks and groundwater runoff. So it's an important measure that can help us here locally, but would also take, provide some resources to other communities throughout the county who need them. I haven't yet been able to do the many things that you've described that we've been able to do here. Another point I'd like to make regarding parks is that, you know, we have been very fortunate to do great planning work over the last few years. And the next great plan for a park that Ted mentioned is Memorial Park. One of the things that we've been really successful by getting out ahead on this advanced planning doing is incorporating multiple benefits into our parks. So you've heard about the idea that we would have a, that we would make use of water facilities under Stewart Park. We're doing that throughout the community now. When we invest in our local water supply, we invest in our community and create a better quality of life in the community. And that's one of the ways that by doing the advanced planning work, we can create the multiple benefits, but also identify funding sources that are not just our own local funding sources. So for example, the water, we just adopted a clean water plan that will be funded, we think, by state dollars, up to $57 million. And that project will create some of these multiple benefits, including some of the open space parks.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to another question now. One of the issues in the city that people in Santa Monica are very politically active, very involved with decision-making in the city, with the council, with the neighborhood organizations. And one of the concerns that has been raised to me is the concern that there's been a kind of disconnect between city council and the city and the people who live in this city. And so I want to ask you to talk about that. But I wanted to ask you also to talk about how you decide who your constituency is. So as a city council person, you're a resident, but you're also a leader of the city and you're a representative of the voters. So how do you, when you make decisions, how do you define your constituency? How do you decide who belongs at the table for any particular discussion? And, you know, and I'll leave it just like that, okay? And we are going to start that one with Oscar.
I definitely agree that there's a disconnect between the city council and the residents of the city of Santa Monica. And we see, we see it in the fact that, you know, we have six neighborhood organizations, six neighborhood organizations that support yes on LV. I think one, one that's no on LV. So the neighborhood associations, who I think are the lifeline of our political culture, and I, you know, being the co-chair of the Pico Neighborhood Association, I see the importance, you know, of the neighborhood associations. And, you know, to, you know, to have that disconnect is unfortunate, you know. So I think I trust the residents. My loyalty is always going to be to the residents, not developers or special interests. So that's kind of the first thing in terms of principle on why I would, you know, be in a position of power. I've always thought about my role as an elected official in terms of, you know, how I can be effective is that I can give a voice and power to people who don't have it. So I try to always listen to the people that aren't speaking at the school board meetings. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of people who can't make the meetings. You know, there's a lot of single parents, for example, that, you know, have a difficult time, you know, coming home and cooking for the kids and getting, you know, their children prepared for school and so forth. And it's hard for them to engage. So I think that it's very important to have elected officials that, you know, try to hear those voices that aren't heard, you know, on the dais and trying to reach out to people, especially those that are most marginalized in our community. Because, you know, that's what I, you know, when Martin Luther King talked about, you know, a beloved community, I think that elected officials have a lot of, a lot of role in that, you know, by listening to people that are most directly impacted by the problems that they seek to solve.
Armin? Thank you. Armin?
I agree with Oscar. There's a complete disconnect within not just our city council, but also our city staff with what residents want for Santa Monica. I founded Residocracy.org specifically for that purpose. It's because I found that our city council was completely ignoring resident input at council hearings. Even after 100 residents would show up and stay till 2:00 in the morning to make their voices heard for their two minutes, city council would say they're still a vocal minority. And Oscar's right, six of the seven neighborhood groups have supported Measure L.B. I'm proud to be the co-author of Measure L.B., to put resident voices first. I'm proud to be running for city council to put resident voices first. What I'd like to do is represent residents first for a change because that change is needed in our government. And it's not just in Santa Monica. This is a problem that's occurred throughout the county, throughout the state, and throughout the country, where special interests have overruled residents. The Sunlight Foundation found four years ago that for every dollar that special interests put into a political action committee during the election, they received back $800 in government grants and contracts. Our elected officials are listening to the special elections and it's time to change that. Our elected officials work for residents. Those are the constituents. Those are the only voices that matter, especially in a local election, especially in a city. Santa Monica will have no problem attracting businesses, but we must consider the residents. And it's missing. And that's why we have the explosion of Measure L.B., where 10,000 residents have signed it to put it on the ballot.
Thank you, Armin. Appreciate it. Terrence, would you like to speak to that issue?
Yeah. Can you hear me now? I think that it's really important for the fact that there seems to be two driving forces in our city. And one is the one that I grew up with and the idea that the, you know, the community is working together, the voice, and they, and then there seems to be a completely separate entity, which is the city hall, working on all of their issues. We're, you know, working to close the airport. They decided that they needed to, you know, take our, you know, 60-year, you know, the nativity scenes down. And, you know, a lot of these things that, you know, sound, you know, tripe, you know, shutting down the, you know, the senior center in the Palisades Park and moving it, you know, up here. It's a very nice building, but if you, if you ask the seniors about what's going on and how they miss their little perch on the, on Palisades Park, you know, the number of things that, that there's this, this machine that is, has an agenda and it's moving along. It works as well to, in the, in the voting issues, you know, the past election when they were doing the airport issue. You know, till the day that I was a poll watcher at the time, people were confused about what yes was no, what no was yes. And the idea that, you know, the city's job should be to, to work on clarity and to make sure that, that things are, you know, functional, clear and concise, you know, for the residents when, you know, they, they kind of angle and obfuscate and, you know, one of the things, some of the stuff we have surrounding, in the surrounding communities, Sentinel Valley School District. We have our mayor who got involved in a situation there, making sure that there was a, you know, some input in the election process there, got a loan to, you know, to the superintendent of schools over there. And he's under investigation from the Federal Bureau of Investigation, okay? The FBI is, and it's, everybody's kind of surprised on how many of these things some of the candidates have made and the incumbents have made.
Ted, Terrence, could you focus more on the question?
Well, that's what I'm talking, we're talking about the communication with, you know, with the people and in between...
All right. Go ahead and say whatever you want. It's time for your time. Okay, I'll give you 10 more seconds because I interrupted you.
All right. Well, I'm talking about...
Just finish your thought. I interrupted you.
If we're electing these folks to represent us, and when I am elected, I will represent the residents of the city and not be involved in Bell and these other places. Excuse me for, you know, getting off on something I think is very serious because we haven't had anyone, any of the newspapers focus on that subject.
Okay. Thank you. Ted, would you like to answer that question?
Sure. Can you guys turn off your mics down there? Thank you. So, you know, about a year or so ago, we got a grant from the Bloomberg Foundation for a million dollars to do a well-being index of residents in our city. And some things were not as good as we thought we hoped. For instance, we found that a surprisingly large percentage of our residents do not get enough fresh foods and vegetables in their diets. So we put some, put some resources into that. And we reached out to people and helped them to eat more healthily. We discovered that a lot of our kids are not ready for kindergarten. So we put some resources into early childhood education. And one of the things that was alarming to us was discovering that a large number of residents feel disconnected from their government. And that was troubling. So we were putting resources into that. We beeped up our communications department and the city manager's office, and we're looking at ways to interact with everybody in the community. And of course, these days, the way you interact with everybody is on these little things, right? So we're working on two-way communications through mobile devices so we can get input from everybody across the community because we do represent all the residents. So we are trying hard to get more input because not everybody can come down to city hall and wait for two hours to speak for two minutes. We want to hear from everybody. Now, when we make decisions, I always try to get input from everybody. And sometimes you have to find the middle ground. I think of the issue about whether we should allow trainers in the parks. There are some people about dead set against having trainers in the parks. Some people thought, we love our trainers in the parks. So we found a middle ground where we charged a reasonable fee to use the public space. We make sure everybody is licensed and insured. They got rid of the bad players. And the outcome has been successful. I'll give you another example. Sometimes you have to decide to listen to which side of an issue we had. Two years ago, we proved only 32 units of housing in Santa Monica, 11 in Pico. So people in the north end of the town came down and said, this is a terrible idea. But the residents that lived around that vacant block that's been there for 20 years said, please do something with this vacant lot. They're tired of looking at it. So in that situation, I chose I'll listen to the people that are nearby because their input is more significant to me than the people that are far away. So you just, it's a balancing act. The guests would love to have more resident feedback on all issues.
Thank you. Remember, everybody's going to get a chance to go for the question that they didn't get. So we move on to the last question before you have that class, that chance. This is kind of a follow-up to that question. The other complaint that you hear is that staff takes too much of a director's role, that they direct the council instead of advising them. And that the council is too often choosing what the staff thinks is what to do as opposed to listening to residents. It's kind of, fits right in there. So Terry, would you like to talk about you, what it's like to work with staff and how you deal with that kind of an issue?
Sure. Well, for starters, we're very fortunate that we have a city staff that is professional. And we have invested over the years in managing our city very well. And the folks that we've hired on this team are to be relied on for their opinions. But their work is to implement the policy positions of the council. And finding that line is the key aspect of how to make the city run well, essentially. The council's deliberations on establish the key directions related to the values that Santa Monicans share. And we set the, we set the direction on these policy questions. The staff implements it. But we do that with advice from our staff as to what will work, what has worked in other cities, you know, what can be done with the resources that we have here. And we rely on them deeply. So, you know, again, we have been able to attract and retain some of the best talent in the county to manage our city, and it reflects on the quality of life here. So we want to rely on that, but of course, be careful to manage that line between what is policy and what is management.
Armin, would you like to also answer that question?
Sure. It's absolutely true. We do have a very well-paid staff that's very capable of doing a good job. And it's absolutely true that it's the city council's role to set the policy. And so I don't buy the fact that sometimes we hear that city council is at odds with our staff because that is a managerial position or managerial role of the city council, is to rein that in when that happens. So to go through a blame game to me, I just don't buy it. I think that if that's what's happening, then we have a leadership crisis in Santa Monica. Our leaders should be able to tell the staff what they want and what to get out of them. And there should be no excuses. I am, I like Rick Cole, our new city manager, but I've also seen that he is taking a role on the dais almost. He is providing input in areas where he's almost acting like a city council member. And I think that's a mistake. Our city manager wasn't elected by the residents of Santa Monica. We elected our city council to direct Rick Cole. And so those roles are getting a little reversed right now. And I don't know why. But I can assure you that on the city council with my leadership, there will be no leadership crisis coming from my seat. I will make it clear that residents voted me in to set a specific policy, and that's what I expect from... And that's what I expect from our very well-trained, very well-paid staff. That will be the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it is now your turn to, we'll start with Mande, and it's now your turn.
I didn't get to answer another question.
Did I short you a question? I'm sorry, would you like to answer that one?
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Like Armin said, this is a, a city that's run by staff and city manager. They weren't elected. But yet, there's a coalition between them and the city council and the city employees. And that's why we have all this development. There is a direct correlation between how you get elected to the city council. Just follow the money. Look in your mailboxes and read these and see who is supporting the incumbents. That's the people you're voting for time after time after time. It's your fault. You voted for these guys. What we need in this city is campaign reform. Starting with clean money so people like myself can run for office. We need to have rent voting, and we need to have term limits. There's too much secrecy. There's too much conflict of interest in cronyism. We need transparency and accountability. We don't have that in this city. I have a way to do this. And this is the reason I first started running for city council back in '92. It's called a virtual town hall. And if you Google me, I don't have any paper up here. You can Google me in SmartVoter. You can read about me in The Mirror this week. And you'll see my ideas because I don't have enough time to tell you.
Thank you, John. I'm sorry about that. Okay, are we ready to move on now to the candidate's choice question? Anybody else good? All right, Mande, you're up first.
So one that I really liked was the one about the city council's best decisions in the past two years. And then what were the worst? And I think, you know, going back to talking with voters, actually going knocking on doors of businesses, meeting people face-to-face at farmers' markets, asking them what it is that they like or they don't like about the city, just the kinds of questions that you normally ask when you're going out canvassing for political causes, which I've done for almost 20 years. And when 90% of the folks say the city council is the problem, when you hear that, just come from nine of the 10 people, it really puts you in a situation where when you're listening to people on this panel who are elected and actually are supposed to be representing the residents and the voters in Santa Monica, say the absolute opposite of that, that they are, you know, fully capable, they're fully competent, the city managers are doing the greatest job ever. One of the other things that came up was our city government. How can you make changes? Well, you make changes by making new people come into office. Nothing is going to change if only one of us is elected. It's just not going to happen. You have to make sure to vote for in if there are three remaining.
Thank you very much. The next person for the candidate's choice, we'll just go down the table, Oscar.
So on the issue of, you know, who's leading the city? Is it the staff or the city council? You know, on the school board, I occasionally see that the, the staff, you know, wants to take the lead and, and do things that really are the purview of the elected officials. I mean, our job is to represent the people. And, and it, the line gets blurred many times. One, I think part of the distrust that, that is occurring with residents in the city leadership has to do with real things that have occurred. For example, Elizabeth Reel, you know, was hired and then fired because, you know, one of our elected officials didn't like her, you know, because she supported, you know, the other city council member. This is just like petty politics, right? The city manager, Rod Guth, he had to resign a position that he received because, you know, he, he gave contracts to this, to this company and then becomes vice president of the company. And he was forced to resign that position. These are real things that happen, you know, by, by some of our leadership. And that's why there's that distrust. So we need to, we need more accountability to make sure that that doesn't occur again.
I'm sorry, we're, we're side conversation here because the, one of the LV speakers is not here when he's supposed to be. But thank you very much. Okay, we're just gonna go right down the table. Terrence?
So this is just.
You may pick any one of the questions that I asked that you didn't get to answer and, and answer it now. Just trying to make sure that I didn't ask your favorite question of another candidate.
Okay, I just, you know, I have vote now for later dot com. And it just says pretty much, you know, what my vision is, is whatever we're doing here is to, is to address what we'd like to see in the future. The, the idea of, you know, the traffic issue is, is a, is a really a very tough one. But for, for one, the citizens' taxpayers' money were allocated for structures and, and the parking meters. And I feel the residents of our community should be able to park for free on the meters and have that, you know, figured out somehow. And especially in the, in the structures. You know, the, talked about the dog park, talked about the beaches and the dog park for the dogs to be able to go into the water. Those seem to be simple things. Maybe these guys could figure that out. I certainly could get them on my track record of raising money and getting things done from private resources.
Thank you, Terrence. I appreciate it. John?
Well, my constituency, from the very beginning, when I first started running for city council, has always been the residents. Residocracy doesn't go far enough, in my opinion. It's a good start. Their sights should be interactive. And they should actually go further than just stopping building over the current height limits, which is what our council members are trying to do. Even though they already passed the land use and circulation element, they want to go above that. This city is designed for high-end, for tourists, for people who can afford the new apartments that are popping up all over the place. And, and excuse me, these are not people who live, who are working here. They drive from here to go to work. The Oaks Initiative, that's another thing I want to really get into. And I want to investigate Santa Monica renters' rights and a coalition between them and city employees and developers. I wish I had more time.
Thank you.
To oppose this, what reason do you think they have for doing it? In other words, they're respected groups. We all have taken their opinion in the past so hard on so many matters. Why do you think this is? This is the broadest coalition ever. People that agree and disagree on so many other things. Why do you think that's happening?
As at every level of government these days, we're faced with propositions that we know little about. And I think that's very true of these groups. For instance, why did the Sierra Club come out against LV? What stake do they have in the ground? They're for open space. They're for light and air. Possibly, they want to put a stop to urban sprawl. And that's legitimate. But, and, and to answer your question more directly, it's because these decisions are made by a small board, not by the total organization. And that board is influenced by, frankly, by growth advocates who have infiltrated those boards. I, I attended the Clue meeting of Arizona 18th about a month and a half ago and talked to one of the clergy after the meeting and was stunned that he took such a strong position against LV. And when I realized, he didn't know anything about LV. Somebody told him it was exclusionary. And that was against his basic principle. Well, LV is anything but exclusionary.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Jason would also like to respond to that question.
I, I do find it a little insulting to think that these groups aren't capable of thinking for themselves and studying the initiative and coming to their own conclusions. The Sierra Club has a very arduous process of study. And, and in the, in the, you know, I had looked over the language of the initiative and studied it based on its national principles. It was vetted, approved by one group in West Los Angeles, then the political committee, then sent to a state group. This idea that somehow these, these groups are being hoodwinked or are wandering blindly into these endorsements because they don't have the time to, to, these are, the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica does not just flip a coin and decide to, to say yes or no on something. There is arduous study, and in fact, these groups put time and energy looking at it. And they said it was too much and it goes too far. Even groups that are not pro-growth said that.
So, Jason, would you like to get a very simple question? Okay, Armin would like to jump in on this one. This is your one jump in.
So as the co-author of Measure LV, I was involved with making presentations to all of these organizations before they took steps or, except for the League of Women Voters, who wasn't interested in listening to us. So their board, for example, is created by a certain number of people, over half of which are members of the Political Action Committee that was formed against Measure LV.
That's not true.
And the analysis, these are facts. And the analysis was created, was done by an individual who was a spokesperson for the same group that Jason Isles works for. So the process across our state, and this is not just indicative of Santa Monica, but the process that developers have used to infiltrate these organizations is exactly why Measure LV is on the ballot. And it's exactly why we see six of seven neighborhood groups of people, of residents, are saying that we should decide how much growth is in our neighborhood. We should decide how much growth and impact are to us as residents. And the people who make these endorsements that don't have to live with the impacts just don't matter. Santa Monica's already dense enough.
Thank you. I, this lady back here would, you know, I, I apologize to people but I should have been asking you to say your name all along. Would you mind telling us your name and then ask your question? Could I, could I respond to that?
Armin. LV's Mexican name is, is like, we live in this amazing city. We're lucky to be here. We don't want anyone else to know. No more, no more building, no more, you know, making our downtown. Yeah, it's a bit of a struggle, the traffic. But boy, do I love the bikes and the metro line. I have a walk map. I, I don't park as much. But you know what? That's not bad for the world. My question to you is, is it true that, like, some of my friends who own, who own businesses and buildings that are over 36 feet, old beautiful buildings downtown San Francisco, if they were to suffer an earthquake or a fire, is it true that they'd have to wait for everybody in Santa Monica to vote on them getting their business back out in the market? Is that true?
Absolutely not. We have an existing zoning code which has an exemption for non-conforming structures. What the opposition does is try to fool people or confuse people into voting no. But the reality is, the reason there's no exception is because our existing code already has a non-conforming section. And what our opponents point to is that they say that there's a section in our, in our Measure LV that says it will override it. But what they fail to tell you is only in a conflict. Our measure does not conflict with that section of the code. It does not touch it, it does not mention it, and it states. Once Measure LV passes, buildings that are over the 32-foot height limit would be considered non-conforming structures because they didn't meet the voter approval requirement. And if you look at the definition of a non-conforming structure, it says if it doesn't meet in terms of the zoning or building regulations or to the application that was made for, for its approval. So it's completely exempt with our existing zoning code. And it's a false argument made by the development community.
Okay, Armin, this is not a speech. This is just a time to answer.
Yeah, I'm answering the question.
But, but I'm watching the clock. I need your help.
I'll pitch in on this one.
Okay. This is your one question?
This is my one question to pitch in on. So I mean, what I'm hearing.
Good to hear you.
Oh, sorry. You also have to disbelieve the broad coalition of organizations that have come out against Measure LV. And always this echoes the, the, the themes from the Trump campaign these days. Don't believe the facts and the system's rigged against me. And so that's what I'm hearing from, from the yes and LV proponents today.
So do we vote yes or no on LV?
So no on LV.
No on LV. And they say no.
Are there any other audience questions? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna give the. Can, can you just let me call on you before you start dying? Okay. You have one, okay, you'll be our last one. You have to stand up, say your name, and speak loudly, please.
Hi, I, well, again, I, I have a question. We get these pamphlets in the mail about LV to warn us about how legal it is. So when I asked Armin directly if what it said in the pamphlet, it says you have to get voter approval for solar panels. Armin and several others said, no, you don't need voter approval for solar panels. That's a lie, that was in the pamphlet. So whatever experts can provide the answer to this question.
So we'll let, we'll let.
What is the question?
He asked, he asked about solar panels. So maybe we'll give one minute to Ron and one minute to Jason to respond to this. Or one minute to Mario.
Yeah, it's very simple. The city height limit.
You need a.
The city height limit is set by the plane of the roof. There are a whole bunch of things above that plane of the roof, including air conditioners, solar collectors, stairwells, elevator equipment that are above the roof plane are not considered in the height. So the solar collectors are not considered height of the building, even though they're above the building, are not considered the height. So they would not be covered by the LV 32-foot, 36-foot limit. So that's again, another lie that's being rolled out.
Okay, you know, I'm gonna ask everybody just to answer the question and not to make a speech. Go ahead, Jason, just answer the question.
Very briefly, the way Measure LV is written, it requires, it requires a vote on any building permit, on any building above that tier one or tier two threshold. So if you're a single-family home and you want to put solar panels on it, it wouldn't matter. You wouldn't need a vote. But if you are in a building that's 38 feet tall, there is a very compelling argument that you would need to do a vote of the people in order to do that because you need the building permit. It's not about adding the height, that's the problem. It's about the existing structure being over the tier one threshold. And the way the measure is written requiring therefore that it go to a vote.
Complicated, isn't it? Okay, I'm gonna go down the table and let those candidates who haven't spoken to this have their couple of minutes in it. Have their minute. Mande, would you like to start?
I already voted for LV. That's where I'm starting.
Okay. Oscar, it's already done.
Yes, I support Measure LV. I'll support Armin's candidacy in this election because I'm inspired, you know, by the work that he's done in this community. I, I trust that he'll put residents before special interests and developers and so forth. I think what's extreme is what we've been getting. The traffic, we talked about our water supply. Overdevelopment is going to tax that water supply, you know, and, and the residents, I mean, we're, we're getting the short end of the stick, you know? So we, we need to, we need to do whatever we can, you know, to, to, to reset, to hit the reset button on development. And I think that's what LV does. It gives the residents an opportunity to be more thoughtful, to reflect. Because, you know, the, the system, the way it's built right now, the way it works, that, you know, money runs things. I mean, you know, you get these PACs, already what, a million-plus dollars in this PAC? It's, it's hard for politicians to resist, you know, when you're so dependent on money to run your campaign. And so if you have a system where money runs things, well, who's gonna, who's gonna call the shots? The people with the money, which is in this community, the developers, people that have money to invest. We want to give power to the residents. Power to the people.
Thank you, Oscar. Terrence?
Yes, certainly, I think the, the candidates here come from an interesting point of view because we interview with the Sierra Club and a number of these other organizations. So especially coming from myself and John Natt or anybody else who have run more than one time, and you see what you're up against as, Jason had said that there's no, you know, we'd be silly to think that any of these groups are connected is, is not the case. The idea that if you look at the list of all of the people on the back of those flyers that are snow in your mailbox on a daily basis, you'll see that they match up with a lot of the other things that we have, you know, a challenge with, a complaint with. The, the idea that at the same time, they're asking us to take a three-minute shower and this is not, you know, you know, just. is not, you know, just towards our community, but you watch the development just, you know, out of, you know, being pushed forward. So I am, I am for the citizens, the residents, to have a voice, to have a vote, to be able to speak up, and I think that's one of the greatest fears, is that they're gonna have to listen to us.
Thank you, Terrence. John?
Thank you. All you need is love. Love is all you need. Well, I wanna point out a supreme irony in this whole debate. The same people that rammed through the land use, land use, loose, what does the C stand for?
Circulation element.
Circulation. I can never remember that. The land use circulation element is rammed through by the same people who torpedoed RIF, Proposition T, which was supported by Ted Winner, by the way, just mentioning another irony. All of these people that are sending out, that are against LV and are sending these out, you have to ask yourself, what's in it for them? It's money. That's really what it's all about. It's not about love, it's about money. It's not about creating jobs for people who live here. I would like to see a development, a high-rise development for people who have low incomes who work here, instead of building all these expensive apartments all over the city for people who live here but don't work here, which exacerbates the traffic problem. I'm John Mann, a man for the people, and I approve this message.
Armin and Terry have already spoken, so we're going right to Ted.
So I'm opposed to Measure LV for a number of reasons. First of all, it concerns that it actually will increase traffic. With that thirty-two-foot height limit in place, if I owned a building downtown and it's time to redevelop that site, I would probably not choose to apply for a four- or five-story housing project because it would require voter approval. Instead, I would build a two-story commercial building, which is always gonna generate more car trips than housing. We have too much commercial development in the city already. We need more housing to address our jobs, housing imbalance. I'm also concerned that the rhetoric around this is weighted a lot of fear. Let's be real. Thirty-two feet doesn't impact single-family residence neighborhoods at all. In our multifamily residential neighborhoods, the essential height limit is thirty feet, so it won't have the impact there. Along the boulevards and our zoning, we created a maximum height of four stories of each boulevard and three stories on the other boulevard. So we're basically talking about downtown. The entire time I've been on the planning commission at the city council, when projects came to force to build the sort of four- or five-story housing projects we've been doing for years, nobody ever objected. That is the future. There's a reason the Sierra Club, the League of Conservation Voters, the County Green Party, and even the Pentagon are in favor of compact, walkable development around transit and jobs, because that's the future with climate change. We gotta get people out of their cars, we gotta have density. In the future, eighty percent of our country will be living in the cities. We need to develop the housing for those people, and I think LV provides too much of an impediment for housing production. I also wanna talk about the specter of these forty development agreements. That's simply not accurate. There are nine active development agreements in the pipeline right now. When we do the downtown plan, half of those will convert to tier-two housing properties that would be zoning compliant. So the real specter is the large hotel projects downtown. Now, when we do the downtown plan, I'm certainly in favor of having some sort of voter approval mechanism for those large projects. But the thirty-two-foot height limit for voter approval of basic housing needs for our community is simply too extreme, so I'm opposed to the measure.
Thank you, Ted. Okay, so we are almost done. You've been a great audience, and we're going to thank our candidates, not only for being here tonight, but really for being candidates for council, because they helped to bring us all together, raise important issues, discuss what we need to discuss in order to keep Santa Monica the vibrant, wonderful place to live, which is why we're all here. And so before I let them make their closing statements, I'd like to give all of our candidates a round of applause. And we're going to let each candidate make a closing statement, and then we could stay in this room for another ten minutes after they're done making their closing statements, and give any one of you a chance to talk to Ron, or Mario, or Jason, or Mendy, or Oscar, or Terrence, or John, or Armin, or Terry, or Ted. So with that, can they, why should we...
Ladies first.
Why should we, why should we vote for you for the campaign?
Well, that's a very good question, probably because you have absolutely no massive record against me for doing things for the last twelve or twenty years. And also because campaigning here in this city is not the easiest city to campaign in, let me just say. With all of the issues that we've just heard and the very strong feelings that we're getting, we're getting absolute no, we're getting absolute yes, and the questions that I was hearing more and more and more as I was working out on the campaign trail, where we don't like the city where, the way that it is, what are you going to do that's different? And my answer was, I'm going to do whatever it is that you ask me to do, I will bring to the council, even if I don't agree with it, I will bring it to the council. And I will make sure that we do have extended time, like what Armin was saying. I love that. We have that in Seattle, where I was born and raised, where you can actually come and they organize and they do things like what love did. Love is one of the main reasons that I decided to run here in Santa Monica, because I saw the grassroots effort of the residents, and I thought, wow, these people aren't just all elite crazy. They don't all want Jane Farnes' big mansion up on the bluff. They actually do care about the city, and I care about the city. I wrote two books here, and I'm forty-three years old, and I wanna find a place that I can live and that I can retire, that I wanna be proud of. As it is, I'm the outlaw from my family that lives out in California. So let's just, let's take it a bigger step, a greater step. Bringing voters in to the planning process of a city is an absolute necessity.
Thank you very much. Oscar?
First of all, I just wanna thank all of you for being here. I wanna thank all the candidates as well, and everyone who spoke today on Measure LV, because what's really important is not, you know, us running for office so much as, you know, you, you know, all the people that, that make up the residents of the city of Santa Monica. I grew up in the Pico neighborhood. It was not easy. You know, there were seven of us in a two-bedroom apartment. It was hard growing up in a very affluent community, being poor. And I worked hard with support from my mom and dad and my family, and I was able to get my master's degree, and I made a commitment to public service. And that commitment has been seen in fourteen years of governance experience on the school board. We have great schools in the city of Santa Monica. And I wanna bring that leadership and that type of experience to the city council. I think that, that disconnect that we talked about earlier between the residents and our government is something that needs to be addressed. And I think that I have the track record. I think if you look at, you know, what I've fought for, what I've worked for, it's about social justice, it's about economic justice, environmental justice, and racial justice. Those are values that are part of what we are as a city. And I wanna make sure that our residents, our, the voice of our residents are prioritized, that our, that our neighborhood leadership is respected, you know, that, that we, that we govern in a way where we lift up everyone, especially those most marginalized in our community. And that's what, that's what I wanna do. That's, that's something that I've done on the school board and in this community, and I ask for your vote, I ask for your support, and I ask that you stay involved, because this city, you know, will not get better if we don't, if we don't, you know, if we don't get involved and stay engaged.
Thank you very much, Oscar. Terrence?
Thanks very much for everyone showing up tonight. My name's Terrence Later, vote now for later dot com. I, I really hung on every line that Oscar said, it's like what he said, you know? One of the greatest bits of news that I got when I started this campaign was that Oscar was gonna be, you know, running as well. I think that he's a treasured member of our community. The idea that, the specifics of what I would like to see is the free parking for the residents on the meters and in the structures, the dog beach to be able to take, we've got eight miles of beach, to be able to have a hundred-yard section to be able to take our dogs from the parking lot into at least the wet sand. The idea that I would also like to, you know, dedicate our night here from my perspective to the passing of Tom Hayden. He was a tremendous friend, a longtime pal of mine, and he also stood very strong in helping me with get focused on do landmarking Chejai Restaurant. The other thing is, the airport is so important as a emergency resource facility with biofuels, with the solar, you know, power and electric planes. There's so many, you know, reasons that so many of these negatives on the airport will disappear in great time, even the flight pattern, the planes being able to, you know, to take off, you know, going straight up.
Ted, can you bring it to a close, please?
I didn't see, I wasn't seeing the...
I've been letting people speak for a longer period of time because this is your, your chance to talk about what you believe in.
Go to vote now for later dot com, and my mail number is there, my email, and please, you know, look for the guys. You have a chance. There's four open spaces, and there's certainly four qualified members of the candidates that are not incumbents. So I would say, you know, vote us all in, and you will see a remarkable change in our city council.
Thank you, Terrence. John, it's your turn.
Thank you. Well, I'm the other green up here.
Are you on, John?
I'm the other green with Mendy. And we've had two greens on the council before, and I watched how they changed and sold out. And I've seen politician after politician get elected to this city over the years that I've been running for office. And I've seen how they changed. And I've seen how that they, their urge to get re-elected overwhelms their actual care about residents, their actual reason why they first got involved in politics. I am not a politician, and I will not change. And you can hope me to that, because I plan to implement a way to have transparency and accountability for the council and the staff and the city manager. I wanna have a mayor in this city, and I wanna have district voting, so Pico neighborhood could have somebody on the council. I wanna have a lot of things changed in this city. I don't want the city manager telling the council what to do anymore. We know that Ron Cole was a deputy mayor of Los Angeles, and he's responsible for a lot of development that has been going on through the whole city. And this city council hired him unanimously. What I wanna do is I wanna streamline our bureaucracy and create not only low-income housing, but entry-level jobs for people who can live here, and stop building apartments for people who live here but don't work here. Thank you. I'm John Mann, a man for the people, and I approve this message.
Thank you, John. Armin?
I think Santa Monica has wonderful residents, and I wanna be part of a community representing wonderful residents. I'm proud to be part of a movement that is taking our city back from development interests, from special interests, once and for all. And it's time that we have leaders who represent residents. I support Oscar De La Torre as well as myself for city council. But I ask you, if you have one vote left in you in this election, just one vote, I think the most critical vote that you will make on November eighth is a yes vote on Measure LV. Because Measure LV will remove the special elections from all of our elections moving forward. We will not have development PACs who end up supporting candidates through independent political action committees, who then end up being beholden to candidates. Right now, the same development, developers who are supporting and know on Measure LV are also supporting the foreign incumbents. And that is a problem with our democracy when residents drop to the bottom of the line. So again, if you have one vote left in you on November eighth, please, don't cast it for me, don't cast it for any of the incumbents, cast it for yes on Measure LV. Let's solve our problems in Santa Monica. Let's put residents first, at least for the next twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you, Armin. Terry?
I'm Terry O'Day, and I've been serving on our city council since 2010 and before that on our planning commission. And I've been honored to be a part of this community, because it's a community that reflects the values I grew up with in a working-class family, supporting working families, investing in education, thinking about the future by becoming a leader in sustainability, becoming a leader in providing a quality education to all kids in this community by investing in our schools and the continuum, and being a lifelong learning community. I'm also honored to be part of this community, because it's a community that is very engaged in our political discussions and discussions around the future of this community, and I've been endorsed by a number of the great organizations that have a lifetime, that have a long legacy of being involved in the questions of the future of this community, like the Sierra Club, like the League of Conservation Voters, like our police and firefighters. And, and I think that this election, we need to continue the great work that we've done to build a terrific community and to lead with our values.
Thank you very much, Terry. Ted, you have the last word.
All right. So I'm Ted Woodruff. I believe Santa Monica is a great place to live, but I also believe we can do more to make it a better place. I'm proud of what we've done in my four years on the city council on numerous fronts. We've passed the most progressive minimum wage law in the country. We have cut our greenhouse gas emissions by twenty percent from nineteen ninety levels, and we're aiming for carbon neutrality by 2050. We've done great things with water conservation and assuring that we have water available locally for years to come, either by putting, currently putting in stormwater capture reservoir on Los Amigos Park, we'll be building one north of the pier, we're putting one in Memorial Park, and we're putting in a water recycling plant under the civic parking lot so we can recharge our actives, so we'll be wholly dependent on local water, while at the same time, we're requiring all new development to be water-neutral. You can't use any more water in a new building than a building that's being replaced. I'm proud of our efforts on affordable housing, proud of our efforts on sustainability. I'm proud of everything we've accomplished in the most recent years, but there's more to do, and I would hope to be elected to do it again. I'm endorsed by Congressman Ted Lieu, State Senator Ben Allen, by Santa Monica's for Renters Rights, by our firefighters, our police officers, by the Los Angeles League of Conservation Voters, by the Sierra Club, by the Santa Monica Democratic Club, by the Los Angeles County Democratic Party, and by every mayor, former mayor currently lives in Santa Monica that I would ask that you endorse me as well, with your vote, either as an absentee voter, vote-by-mail ballot, between now and November eighth, or November eighth, when you go to the polls. So thank you for coming here tonight.
Thank you. So anybody who wants to is invited to stay. We're gonna spend ten more minutes here having one-on-one conversations, but will you join me now, please? And thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you.